I'd like to call this meeting of the Arden County Board of Commissioners to order and ask Mr. Steve Johnson if he will present the implication.
Mr. Smith, please. Father, we read in your word that if we'll humble ourselves and we'll come to you and we'll incline our ear to you and listen to your law, that you will give us wisdom. And I pray here tonight we'll do that, that we'll humble ourselves before you, we'll listen to you, and you will impart wisdom to us. For, Father, we know that we're in constant need of correction, and we're all the time in need of your wisdom, and we pray you'll grant it to us. We pray, Father, that everything we do, say, or think will be pleasing to you, benefit to the folks of this county, and we ask you in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Brother Johnson. You stand out for pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mash, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have about four adjustments to make to the agenda and a couple of words of explanation. One is, I wanted you to note that although you did call for a public hearing for this evening on an industrial incentive grant, due to some communication conflicts, we were not able to get that to the paper in time. We did discuss this with Russell Rogerson, and he discussed it with the client, and they said that the next meeting was fine with them, so that for that reason, it is not on the agenda this evening, but will be on the agenda at the next meeting. Also, we have several items to add, and I know that this is something that we try to avoid when at all possible, but again, it was necessary for Retha, who was prepared the agenda this week, to be out of the office because of some family health situation, and we tried to get it out early because of that, and there were two or three things that came in that really needed to be on the agenda tonight. So, the adjustments to the agenda for the meeting tonight will be memo number seven, and you should have this in front of you. Item G, which is a request for approval of budget amendment number 13 to recognize some childcare daycare stimulus funds, and Mr. Wall will be here for that. Memo eight. Item H is authorization and award of sole source purchase of in-car video equipment. And then memo number nine is item I, request from the Health Department for approval of budget amendment to transfer H1N1 grant funds to various budget lines, including salary and fringe. And then also would like to have a closed session for economic development. That will be GS 143-318 dot 11A4. Those are the additions to the agenda. Now, unfinished business, at your last meeting, you had discussed concluding your discussions on the panhandling ordinance this evening. That was under unfinished business, so if you're going to delay that, that would need to, or it really needs to be added if you are going to discuss it under unfinished business. And those are the adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Well, on this item, unfinished business, I believe I spoke to Mr. Johnson, Mr. Norman. I hadn't spoken to you yet, but I think that this was one thing that Mr. Robertson was speaking out on.
He was very in favor of it.
Yeah, I think what we better, it'd be best to do is, in this case, just delay it another two weeks till he's here. It's all right with y'all. All right? Okay, let's just don't put that on the agenda then.
Okay. So, I guess then the additions would be the other four that I went over, if you want to add those to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, you've heard the adjustments to the agenda, is all in favor of the agenda is read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Okay, our next item, business is a presentation of a proclamation, and I don't believe persons here that we were going to present it to this time, but I'm going to go ahead and we can go ahead and adopt the resolution, the proclamation as read, and if the person shows it, we'll present it at that time. Proclamation for Flight of Honor Day on September the 19th, 2009, whereas World War I Veterans Memorial in Washington DC was dedicated to the public on May the 29th, 2004, and whereas World War II Memorial honors the 16 million who served in the armed United States forces and more than 400,000 who died, along with those who supported the war effort at home, and whereas by best estimates, 5,289 men, women from Arden County served in the World War II, and 147 are known to have died while in service. And whereas in effort to ensure that as many Arden County veterans as possible get to visit the memorial site, Rotary Club District 7680, consisting of 14 counties, will fly a group of veterans to Washington DC on September the 19th, 2009, to tour the World War II Memorial, and whereas World War II veterans contributed to our nation's freedoms with the goal of service above self, and the Flight of Honor Service projects recognize their valor and their courage. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Arden County Board of Commissioners that appreciation is hereby expressed to the Rotary Club District 7680 for this commendable civic initiative, and that on September the 9th, 2009, be declared as Flight of Honor Day in Arden County, this 15th day of September, 2009. This will be presented to Rena Turner, who will be presenting this, I guess, to the other members of Rotary Club District 7680. All in favor of this proclamation? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Okay, the first item is a request to approve the energy crisis and fuel management plans. This is memo number two, and Mr. David Martin, our emergency management director, will be here to present this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Back during our last energy crisis, when gas was a short supply, there were several from different departments and agencies that met, including some of our fuel suppliers, and out of that, it was determined that we needed with the county to come up with some type of arrangement or some type of plan to deal with the energy crisis, being from anywhere from the petroleum products, even up through the electricity, propane, natural gas, or whatever. So, I was tasked with going back in the emergency management office and trying to develop a plan. And what we've come up with is a two-part plan, that being an energy crisis management program, plan, and also a fuel management plan, which would more so apply to the county departments. I will say that when we look at the fuel management plan, we put three different phases, or really four phases. First phase would be do nothing, everything's normal, and then you go up through the fourth, the third phase, or the fourth phase, where it would be asked in the departments to cut back 50% on their fuel. Also, we developed a form that we would utilize to try to get more information from the fuel distributors and so forth, so we could turn this information over to the state and also know it ourselves. During the last crisis, we was having to give the state daily briefings. We were trying to call our suppliers with the help of purchasing to get some indication on where we stood as far as our stockpiles and our supplies. We were given the state daily briefings, however, we wasn't getting much feedback. So, when we went to looking at it, and you can find the general statute here as far as it's attached to this plan, is the state has what they call an emergency energy council or an energy council, that tied all of this plan back to that general statute. So, at this time, I ought to ask you if you have any questions. I'm not going to take the time to sit here and go through every aspect of the plan, but if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them or find them for you. We do hope to include this, if you adopt this portion of the energy crisis and fuel management plan, we hope to include that in our overall county emergency plan as an annex.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Martin? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to adopt the energy plan.
Motion's been made to adopt the energy plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries for a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is to call for a close-out public hearing to be held October the 6th, 2009, for the 2006 Community Development Block Grant. Ms. Blumstein is here to present this and answer any questions.
Thank you. The rules that govern the Community Development Block Grant require that we hold a close-out public hearing to receive comments on the project as a whole. This is the Pratt Project where the rail spur was constructed at the West Farm Industrial Park, and I'd request that you call for that for the meeting on October 6th. I will add that project came in under budget.
Okay. Long time in coming in under budget, too, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Any questions, Ms. Blumstein? Clearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the public hearing for October 6th.
Okay, motion's been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries for a.
Thank you.
Item C is a request to approve the refunds and releases for the month of August. Mr. Doolittle has submitted those to me. He indicates that they are in order and that no county commissioner has any involvement in any of these refunds or releases.
Is there a motion? We accept recommendation.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries for a. Mr. Smith will present memo number five, Solar Erosion and Sediment Control Expansion Agreement.
Thank you. The, this, I've submitted three interlocal agreements for your review, one with Troutman, Mooresville, and Statesville. This is the final step in formalizing our agreement to take over erosion control services for each town. These agreements are basically setting forth the specifics for the contract, so to speak, that we're going to enter into with the municipalities. And I will add, we have already begun to enforce these standards, and to me, this is something of a formality. I have submitted the draft of the one that I used as the main interlocal to Mr. Pope and made one change based on his input, and I would ask for an approval if possible.
Questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries for a.
Mr. Smith also has item E, the approval of the 2030 Horizon Plan.
The plan that I've submitted to you for your review tonight included all of the comments and requested changes that were made at our last meeting where we discussed the plan. I didn't really prepare any formal statements tonight because we did go over it in pretty great detail at the last, at the call meeting. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, but I think that in reviewing this, I think we've made all of the requisite changes, and I hope that they've been made to your satisfaction, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have on the plan.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith, I contacted you about the map on Cornelius Road, but I talked to the folks in Mooresville and the gentleman who was concerned about it. Let me make sure, though, the commercial designation you have in this plan is the plan that is set aside in the Mooresville Land Use Plan, the study that's ongoing.
That's correct. We've taken Mooresville's land use plan and essentially just put it into this document.
Okay, then if that's the case, he's okay, he's covered. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Here, none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the chair and my fellow members, I'd like to divide this up into two motions if I could. The first being that we would, that I move that we adopt the map as been presented by Mr. Smith.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to divide it up into two, since it's designated?
Yeah, that's a procedural matter, you're correct. I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we divide this matter up into two motions. The first motion would have to do with the adoption of the map as presented by Mr. Smith, and the second would be for the adoption of the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Okay. Motion's been made. Any discussions? Clearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries for zero. Then go ahead.
Now, I would like to offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt the map as presented by Mr. Smith in the 2030 Plan.
Mr. Johnson's motion to adopt the map as presented in the 2030 Plan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries for a.
All right, now, if I could offer a second motion, that we approve the 2030 Plan with the amendments that this board has offered in our previous consideration. And I do know that there are, still remain some hesitancy among some focuses of this plan, but if I could, if you would indulge me just a moment, that any time that a legislative body seeks to adopt this ordinance, there's always some discussion about what the role of government is, and that's a good thing. I hope there's always a debate about that, as far as how much regulation there ought to be and how much planning there should be. At a previous meeting, I did make the statement that, you know, if government plans too much, it does make it difficult for those in the private sector to plan. However, you can also make the argument that if government does not plan enough, it makes it difficult for folks in the private sector to plan. So, I guess that it boils down to this, is how much regulation and how much planning is too much. I do not think that this plan over-regulates or over-plans, particularly with the amendments that we've offered. I think it was a good piece of work when it was originally presented to us. I think it was very reflective of the charge that we gave Mr. Smith and his staff, and I think it was a reflection of the folks who composed these subcommittees and also the steering committee. When it came to us, there were some philosophical differences, and those were demonstrated by the amendments we made. But in consideration of these matters, I think we should always remember that government was established to create, preserve, and maintain order. I won't become too high-minded this evening, but Mr. Madison said if we were all angels, there'd be no need for government. Well, we're not all angels, and therefore, it is incumbent upon government to regulate our behavior to some extent. And you can make the argument that too much government can be injurious to personal liberties, but you can also make the argument that too little government can be injurious to our liberties, as some people will, by lack of character, will take action that is injurious to someone else's exercising their own liberty. This ordinance, I believe, with the amendments that we offer, addresses a lot of areas that will be beneficial to this county, and I'll just mention a few of them. It will be particularly beneficial to our agricultural community. It will give them protection from encroaching residential development. At the same time, it recognizes their ability to remain profitable by allowing them to establish enterprises that have to do with value-added products and their marketing of those products. So, I think it's beneficial to those folks. It is also beneficial to residential property owners, and that it will, that they will not be molested by the over-development of commercial or industrial property adjacent to them, hence harming their peace of mind and their quality of life. But it also, at the same time, allows us to create a zoning ordinance for orderly development for these folks, so that they can effectively and efficiently go about their day-to-day business, and it also protects their property rights by harm from other people. But it also creates an environment, I think, and it allows enough liberty in this plan that it's beneficial to the business community, because it does avoid onerous regulations. It is business-friendly, and it sets aside areas for development, the more intense of which are located near infrastructure and major transportation arteries. But it also allows small businesses to flourish, because it does not over-regulate them. It will allow the establishment of neighborhood business, highway business, and general business. All that said and done, I think it is a, I think it's a good plan. I liked it even more with the amendments that some of us offered. I think it'll provide orderly development for this county, but it is just that, it is a plan. It will be amended, and someday, some other board of commissioners, composed of different people, will see a need to update this plan. For some time to come, I think it will serve the people of this county well, and I'd encourage my fellow commissioners to vote for its adoption. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, is there a motion?
I would offer a motion for adoption, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion to adopt the plan. Any discussion?
For clarification, Mr. Chairman, the motion was to adopt the part of the plan other than the map.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, no.
No.
Motion carries three, one.
Okay, next item is approval of the September 1, 2009 minutes. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Wall, DSS Director, will present item G, a request for budget amendment number 13.
You have before you a budget amendment 13, to recognize daycare stimulus funds and appropriate for expenditure. Arden County will receive $745,023, and this is all stimulus money, no county money involved. We would like to use this money to reduce our waiting lists. Our waiting list in July was 531 children. Working families will be our priority, to enable them to work. Also, education would be a priority also, but this money would help daycare children receive a safe nurturing and educational environment, which helps them to get a good start in a school, and I ask that you recognize these funds for that purpose.
Any questions, Mr. Wall?
Yes, sir. Mr. Wall, I always ask this question, but are there any strings attached to these funds?
No, sir.
There's no commitment to spend county funds in the future or otherwise? Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Clearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Pose, no.
Mr. Lael will present memo number eight, item H, awarding a sole source purchase.
Good evening, gentlemen. In March of 2009, Sheriff's Office received a Department of Justice Justice Assistance Grant of $107,728 to buy in-car camera equipment. Sheriff's Office for the last two years has been trying to standardize with a piece of equipment made by the ICOP Corporation. This equipment has been very good in bringing them up to a good standard of safety for their officers. They're very pleased with this equipment. We managed to identify a federal GSA Schedule Award that we were able to buy off of based on the Homeland Security Initiative's approval of local government law enforcement agencies buying from that. We've been buying from that without bidding for the last two years. That is approved by the North Carolina General Statutes as an exception to the bidding statutes, and also through the Homeland Security Initiative. The Justice Assistance Grant does allow for a sole source approval award for the procurement from this company. They are right now considering an application to grant that sole source approval. To be able to finish that approval and that procurement, we have to also adhere to the North Carolina General Statute requirements, which also require that you, as the board, approve a sole source procurement for that also. So, we are here tonight to request approval and award of a sole source procurement for these ICOP in-car video cameras.
Any questions, Mr. Lael?
Mr. Lael, you may not know the answer to these questions. If you don't, it's a little bit out of your area expertise, but you say that currently 70% in your memo of the office patrol cars are equipped with this system. I know some of, I've talked to a couple of deputies, and some of the units they have now are a little bit outdated, but do you know after this, what percentage of them will be integrated into the system? Will we be almost 100% there?
We will actually be, will be close to 100%. I think this will bring us up to about 90%. We also have 10 units that are in the current Sheriff's Office budget out of county funds, separate from this particular purchase.
Okay. Okay.
Any other? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Susan Johnson, Director of Nursing for the Arden County Health Department, will present memo number nine, item aye.
Before I get started, do each of you have the budget amendment, actual budget amendment? Before I get started, do each of you have the budget amendment, actual budget amendment? I know you have the memo. Do you have that? Did you have that, Jean?
No, I don't have it.
Okay. Come on. In August, we received approval by the Board of Health and by this board to, or for, a budget amendment in the amount of $60,000. These funds are being received to use for H1N1 pandemic flu planning, and at that time, the money was put into the community awareness line, because we did not have at that time the contract agreements that told us exactly how the money could be spent, but we knew that we were getting the money, and we were trying to be proactive in our planning. Yesterday, we did receive our contract agreements, and they do stipulate that the money cannot supplant county funds. We have planning that's going on right now, and we have an event planned for the 26th of September where we could use these funds to pay salaries, and it's my understanding that the budget ordinance requires Commissioner approval to move money into or out of salary infringed. So that's the primary reason for this budget amendment, is just to move money from community awareness into salary infringed. Now, there are other lines affected, but that's the primary reason for the amendment tonight, is because of the involvement of salary infringed.
So, Ms. Johnson, basically, this doesn't buy the vaccine, it merely pays for the labor and the associated cost of delivering the vaccine. Is that right?
That's correct. We will be receiving the H1N1 vaccine at no cost to us. We will get it from the CDC supplies, and we have been told that we will also receive the syringes and the alcohol swabs, the things that are necessary to actually give the injection. But this money can be used to purchase other items that might be used in all kinds of events where mass vaccinations or mass medications need to be distributed.
Do you think this amount of money is adequate to set up the procedure, or you think, depending on the demand, you might need more?
I think that, I think, well, I think it's what we're getting, 60,000. There may be a little bit more planning money coming down, and then we've been told that we are also going to get money to actually give the vaccination. So there's another pot of money coming, but we don't have any idea how much that's going to be.
Ms. Johnson, is this part of the initiative for the middle schools where you're going to do the vaccination there?
It is a separate pot of money. It is not the same, right? It is a different pot. This money actually came from the North Carolina Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response. The other money was stimulus money, or money that came from that.
Okay. Any other questions? Ready to make a motion?
Motion to approve, this request, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries.
Those are the administrative matters, Mr. Chairman.
I think I've lost the number. This is second monthly meeting, isn't it? This is public comment period. If anyone wishes to speak at this time, microphones open. If one wishes to speak, then we'll let the county manager speak.
Well, other than the written report that is presented before you, I just wanted to bring back up the item that I brought last meeting, and that is asking for you to consider setting aside some time in late October, early November, to do a budget review and update, looking at the current year's budgets for the first quarter, as well as expenditures and revenues, while as doing some projections for the rest of the year, and even starting to take a look at the following year. But I suggested a couple of dates, Friday, October 30 in the afternoon, or Saturday, October 31 in the morning, or in the afternoon of Friday, November 6, or the morning of November 7. Those are suggestions. I didn't know if you'd had an opportunity to check your calendars to see if either of those would be, would work for you, or if you felt that you could...
I may have a problem with the first one, but I think all the others are okay.
Mr. Chairman, I wondered if, and I'd asked you, Mr. Mashburn, too, could these possibly be covered in a couple of briefing sessions? We typically have not had briefing sessions. If we went into briefing at four o'clock and went through till seven, it just seemed like another possibility for us to cover this ground.
I think it's probably a good idea if we knew we wouldn't have to have a briefing session. That's...
Well, I understand.
I wish after last week we had had one and got home at 10:30.
Yeah.
But I'll leave it up to y'all.
At the last meeting, I said any day of the week's fine with me, but since then, I've had an employee who's going to be out. He had to have some surgery, but I can work around it, but a Tuesday, a Thursday, or a Friday will be the best days for me. So if I got a couple weeks notice, I'm good. I can still get some help scheduled in, but...
I prefer Friday myself.
Okay.
I pack it up and don't have to worry about it.
Is a Friday morning a possibility?
Yeah.
If we had to do Friday, that would be my preference.
So if...
It's fine with me. I don't have a problem.
Mr. Mashburn, what do you?
Well, I was going to say, based on what I've heard so far, if you want to have it on Friday morning, and the first weekend is out, then we're looking at Friday, November And what time would you like to start?
It depends on where we have biscuits or not.
We'll have whatever you want to have.
The earlier the better for me.
Crack of dawn for me, yeah.
Y'all make it easy. Y'all got to get the biscuits, so make it easy on yourself.
We will have them here by, well, let's just say eight o'clock, okay?
Okay.
For a Saturday, for a Friday morning at eight o'clock, and we'll have biscuits, okay?
If you want to get up really late, that's fine.
Not late.
If you want, that's fine.
Well, we got to cook the biscuits, too.
I'm one of those nine o'clock people.
All right. Okay, so we're saying Friday, November 6 at eight o'clock. Sounds good. Thank you very much. And that's the only thing I have. So the other item, Mr. Chairman, is a economic development incentive, and I think Michael is here now, so we're ready to go into closed session unless you have something else.
May I ask one quick question, Mr. Chairman? Is there opposition to the panhandling ordinance?
Don't know.
You don't know?
I think the concern was Mr. Robertson, he expressed a lot of interest on that, and along with yourself, it's been driving forward.
Yeah, I just, I don't think he'd mind if we voted in the way he wanted to vote, but...
Not in my neighborhood, there's not a lot of opposition to it, but we don't panhandle.
No, I mean on the...
We work.
I mean on the board.
I move that we move into closed session for economic development, GS 143-318-11A4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like sign.[1199.13] Um, I move that we move into closed session for economic development, GS 143-318 dot eleven A four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like sign.[1054.82]